Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commissioner meeting for October 28th, 2024 is now in session. Would you stand, gentlemen, the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill, President of the Board this year. To my right is fellow Commissioner and Vice Chair Barb Lewis, and to my left is fellow Commissioner Jeff Benton. We have with us our Administrator Tracy Davies and Deputy Administrator Eric Postedler, and of course, our clerks. Let's begin.
Resolution number 24-860, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held October 24th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-860. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We do have some public comment signed up for today. I have given Commissioner Merrill the public comment forms in the order that they were received.
Yeah, we handed these before the meeting started, and we will let you comment for three minutes in the order in which they were received. And Carl, then come forward. So just ask you to introduce yourself and perhaps give your address.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carl Von Veltier. I live in Delaware County and have been a resident in Ohio for 23 years. We are volunteers, not spokespersons, with United Sovereign Americans, a nationwide completely volunteer organization of thousands of active volunteers. We proclaim it is our civil right as citizens to have free, fair, and legally valid elections, applying existing laws to a valid election process. Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas, it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Quote, "And the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise," end quote, Reynolds v. Sims, 377 U.S. 533, 1964. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in the holding of the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," end quote, in Recoey 127 U.S. 731, 1888. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate in National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. And four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system from the Help America Vote Act, 2002. Whereas, an open source audit of the Ohio 2022 general election conducted by Ohio State citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 1,046,431 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Ohio State voter roll database. That's 1,046,431. 602,631 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants. That's 602,631. 1,162,079 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election at the time of certification. No one knows who cast them. That's 1,162,079. 713,262 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Ohio was 36. Certification is defined by law, and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. We have our second, Stephen. Did you come out and introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name is Stephen J. Schaefer. I'm a resident of Delaware County. Okay, leaving off, or Carl left off on certification, I'll be speaking. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voter must be known actually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud avanicio, United States versus Throckmorton, 98, U.S. 61, 1878. From time immemorial, an election to public office has been, and point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates. United States versus Classic, 313, U.S. 299, 1941. Whereas, Ohio's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, in the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us and demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not a nomis at attestation, sorry. Number two, voter rules certified accurate and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and CVRs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, that brings us to our third, and Jessica? Just introduce yourself, please.
Yes, my name is Jessica Geller, and I am a resident of Delaware County, Sunbury, Ohio. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count, final canvas, including audibility and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a NIST compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with 95% of confidence level. Of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified insured and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other papers in electronic election systems, including logs. If the total of the unique variances above this is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably, I'm sorry, probably corrected, a manual hand recount and full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirement is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. You have just heard a powerfully written resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. The resolution outlined massive inaccuracies from our 2022 election. From registrants through certification, it asks for meaningful remedies for all to proactively protect our civil rights by having valid 2024 general elections for all Americans. The resolution cited many United States Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Existing election laws should not be ignored. Our election system, which is a part of our national security, infrastructure can't be continued to be ignored. The United Sovereign Americans website, UniteForFreedom.com, showcases our nationwide initiatives and videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found in Ohio and other states in the country. The website is unite, the number four, freedom.com. I encourage you to learn more about the American Sovereign Americans at Unite for Freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. The word "provably" kind of bothered me, too, so I...
I had a harder time.
So, thank you.
And we request that the Commissioners sign this resolution for us today.
Well, first of all, as far as the resolution, it's something we'll need to review, something so it will not be signed today. I will make sure the other two Commissioners get copies of this, and we will evaluate it, okay? With that, thank you very much for your time on that. And I know there's several people here, and we're all interested in good elections, so we all share that. We also have another speaker who wants to speak, I think regarding Facebook. Is that correct? Deborah?
That's correct. Okay. My name's Deborah Guebert, and I live here in Delaware City. So I'm actually, this is actually on the same topic in a certain way, because I put a comment on your Facebook site, and I'll read it to you. It might be more important to protect access to voter registration from the tens of thousands or more, as we heard, of ineligible people currently listed. That is, then to be congratulating people on how well things were done. A likely estimate for Ohio is 15% to 20% of the approximately 150,000 currently registered. That is in Delaware County. It is not credible that over 97% of age qualifying residents have legitimately registered, as per Delaware County Board of Election Statistics. And in fact, on some of those statistics, it's been shown that there are more people registered than existed in those age groups. And this is, this is from Dr. Frank's data. As you know, you were all invited to a seminar that he gave explaining where he got it and all of these facts. So this is not a new thing to any of you. Now, my, the response to my comment was, a comment was deleted from this thread for violating our social media policy because it is spam and has no reasonable relation to Delaware County government speech. If this poster violates our policy again, which can be viewed at HTTPS, etc., Delaware, Ohio, social media policy, they can be blocked. The deleted comment is kept as a public record. Any member of the public can file a public records request, etc., etc. This social media account is maintained by the Commissioner's Office. So I would, I would seriously object to the lack of democratic openness that this sort of policy that apparently you have instituted on your Facebook page is accomplishing. So I challenge you on that, to change that, to make it more open. And another comment I'd like to make is the fact that apparently only three people are allowed to speak on any one topic. I mean, that again is shutting down the opportunity for serious public comment. That is what we were told when we came in.
That is accurate.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Ms. Guebert, Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. Ms. Guebert's comment was not deleted from the Facebook comment. It's still on here, right here. The spam that did occur was something, I believe, selling T-shirts. That's what was deleted and was spam. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's continue.
Item number three, resolution number 24-861, in the matter of approving purchase orders that announce certificates, payments of warrants, and batch number CM APR 1025, and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 1025.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-861. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-862, in the matter of canceling the Delaware County Commissioner's session scheduled for Thursday, December 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion, vote.
That is the CCAO winner conference. Vote on motion 24-862. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-863, in the matter of setting date and time for viewing and public hearing for consideration of the drainage improvement petition for the Nelson Number 131 watershed filed by Hardscrabble Farms Incorporated and others.
So moved. Seven.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Vote on motion 24-863. Mr. Merrill?
I'm sorry?
Vote.
Wait, no one's going to speak?
Oh, this is just setting date and time, Monday, January 13th, 2025, for the viewing, and Monday, April 7th, for the hearing.
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-864, in the matter of proving a proclamation to honor our veterans by taking part in the Green Light Event Initiative during the month of November.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
We do have a few people here to talk about that today.
Brian, are you speaking solely, or it says on here that...
He's in the front.
You look confused, sitting back there standing. Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Joel Sedano. I'm a resident of Delaware County. I'd like to thank the county Commissioners for considering the resolution to make Delaware an Operation Green Light of Vet County. I'm with the Local Knights of Columbus, Assembly 844, and we have participated in Operation Green Light for the past several years. This year, we will support Operation Green Light by handing out 400 green light bulbs to make people in Delaware County aware of Operation Green Light. We've already handed out 200 light bulbs and plan on distributing another 200 at the first Friday event in downtown Delaware this Friday. The light bulbs are free to anyone who wants to put up a green light to support our veterans. We also will be collecting donations for Central Ohio Veterans Stand Down. It's a veterans' organization that is geared to helping veterans that are having trouble getting back into civilian life. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, I believe you want to say something?
Just want to thank Joel for, you know, bringing this up. Anything that we can do, Brian Gallagher, Director of the County Veteran Service Office, anything that we can do to, you know, support the veterans community, you know, we're, you know, 100% behind. Whatever we can do to help, Joel, let us know. Thank you.
Great. And we had this resolution ahead of time, of course, and had time to review it. Thank you.
Yeah, just so there's no confusion, this resolution was given to us in advance, so we had time to evaluate it and consider it.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I believe we're putting the lights up starting the 4th, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
And through the 11th, so there'll be a light out in front of our building. And I'm going to ask for a vote, and I'm going to make another comment after that, so let's go ahead and vote.
Vote on motion 24-864. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye. I just want to remind everybody that the Veterans Parade is this Sunday. I will be in it. And can't speak for my fellow Commissioners, I'm not sure they're status. And the parade will be at 3:00. And I'm bringing it up now because it's a veterans' event. I think it's appropriate place to bring this up. I was told that we have more entrance this year than last year, which is a big positive. And the cannon fire will take place about 3:10 downtown, I'm told. The parade will start from the fairgrounds around 3:00. I think that's kind of alerted everybody downtown that the parade's approaching. And there will be a flyover at 3:30. And according to my phone, the weather's supposed to be in the 60s, cloudy, but no rain. So blame my phone if it rains. And this is an important event, supporting our veterans, and I would encourage everybody who can to come out and be supportive. So, Brian, anything you want to add on that?
I'd just add that, you know, Margaux's the main point of contact for this. She does an outstanding job. She truly does. And it's, you know, the parade has grown and grown over the years. And also want to mention that on Veterans Day, the 11th, there is a breakfast that occurs out at the fairgrounds, and Source Point is the point of contact if any veterans wish to sign up to, you know, attend the event.
Brian, could you just tell us what time on...
On Saturday? It's Saturday morning, so 9:00.
Oh, okay. And, okay, Saturday morning.
So, not Saturday, it's Monday morning. So Veterans Day is Monday. Yeah, so Monday at 9:00.
Okay. And I believe there's a ceremony here.
Yeah, so the ceremony here is at 11:00.
Okay.
So for those, and the reason why there's a ceremony that's here is that the veterans' evolution that occurs in the morning, you know, you have to be a veteran or be a family member of the veteran that's going with them to attend the breakfast, but this is open for the public. So if somebody wants to attend a veterans' ceremony, then that's what the event out in front of the building with the flags.
And the street's been blocked off in the past year, as I believe, still the case, if you're correct.
Yes, sir.
So we encourage everyone to attend those events as well.
Correct.
Okay, thanks very much, Brian.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Would you like a picture?
I'm sorry?
Would you like a picture?
I still didn't hear you.
Would you like a picture?
Sure, let's do a picture.
You have the proclamation in front of you.
Okay, you want to go ahead? We've already...
Yes, but you have the proclamation.
That's a good point. I'm going to read the proclamation. And thank you for that. I'm going to read the proclamation, and we'll do a photo. Whereas, Delaware County has a responsibility to recognize veterans and current service members as valued members of our community. And whereas, veterans are some of our nation's bravest and hardest-working men and women, with nearly 200,000 service members transitioning to civilian life each year. And whereas, studies indicate that between 44% and 72% of these veterans transitioning to civilian life experience high levels of stress during this time and are at high risk for suicide. And whereas, Operation Green Light for veterans provides an opportunity to literally shine a light on the service and sacrifices of our veterans. And whereas, green is the color of hope, renewal, and well-being, and the simple act of changing an outdoor light to green provides a tangible way to show gratitude not only to our veterans, but to current U.S. service members and their families. And whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties to recognize and support Operation Green Light for veterans. Therefore, be it resolved that Delaware County Board of Commissioners declares itself to be a green light for veterans' county and will display green lights outside the historic courthouse from November 4th through November 11th, 2024. And the Board further encourages its citizens to honor those who have served and sacrificed by also displaying green lights at their residences or place of business. Signed by Commissioner Jeff Benton, Commissioner Barb Lewis, and Commissioner Gary Merrill. With that, let's get a photo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, item number seven, resolution number 24-865, in the matter for approving a permit for use of Delaware County facilities.
So moved. Seven.
Motion made in second. A discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-865. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-866, in the matter of appointing a member to the Delaware County Transit Board.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a resolution to appoint Todd Miller as the new member of the Delaware County Transit Board, and we recommend your approval.
I think he'll make an excellent member, head of Habitat for Humanity. Done a lot of great work in Delaware County.
And I'll just add that I thought he did an excellent job interviewing, did know him personally, did my own research, and I think he's going to be a great addition. Call for vote.
Vote on motion 24-866. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 24-867, in the matter of accepting the award of the Victims of Crime and State Victims Assistant Grant for Victim Services.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Ford with the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. The Victim Services Unit in Delaware County Prosecutor's Office has once again been awarded Victims of Crime Act and State Victims Assistant Act grants. These grants allow us to continue serving our victims of crime in Delaware County community. It partially funds our Victims Director and our Victims Assistance. Our Victims Director is Trish Wright, and our Victims Assistance are Caitlin Groh, Meg Delman, and Megan Powell. All of these positions are extremely vital to our division and Delaware County. They continue to support victims of crime as well as uphold the law by statute to provide victims' assistance. We have been awarded $81,832.50, which includes a local match by the Commissioners of $15,945.31. The grant period began on October 1st of 2024 and will conclude on September 30th of 2025, and we will have the opportunity to renew that grant.
Questions or comments?
Have we had any movement at the national level on this? I know the grants were cut.
Yeah, we still, with these particular grants, they're still maintaining the same amount. They have not allowed us to request any more funds. And I know one of the years they had told us not to request more funds, but we gave it a chance.
Good, good.
They made us resubmit and give the same amounts that we had received in the past.
I know that Prosecutor Shiffel and you and me, and we're all working on our, with Congressman Jordan, and also Congressman Balderson, on changing this. It's such a vital program. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Call for vote.
Vote on motion 24-867. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution number 24-868, in the matter of approving a contract between the Union County Board of Commissioners and the Delaware County Board of Commissioners regarding reciprocal inmate housing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion?
Hi, Michael Roy, Finance Director, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. This contract is an agreement with Union County to house inmates that they are not able to house, for one reason or another, at our jail, and provide the services that we would for our inmates as well.
And it's vice versa as well. I mean, if we have...
They are not a Prius certified, so we do not house our inmates at Union County right now.
But I did have another question.
Yeah.
Usage. Have we actually housed many Union County inmates?
We have had a few. Currently, I'm not sure if we have any, but we have had a few in the past. I don't know the exact numbers.
Okay. Yeah, if you could do some research and let me know.
Yeah.
Because this and the next one obviously are related. And so that's point number one, just how much are we using it? Point number two is the cost. I know the cost hasn't changed much in recent years, but I know our costs of operating the jail have gone up. So I would like to see an updated cost study. Justin's here, maybe he can participate in that with you.
Yeah.
Because I think it's under what it actually costs us to house an inmate for a day, so...
Yeah, and I know that the rate, the rate did increase with this contract.
Did it?
But we can definitely get those numbers for you.
Yeah, I think it's still low, but we do need to keep it current. We're not trying to make a profit, we're just trying to recover our costs.
Exactly.
And work with our partners in Union County and Knox as well in the next one, so... And work with our partners in Union County, and Knox as well in the next one, so.
Yes.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
And this is something we talked about, federal inmates, et cetera. On all of those, we need to be, make sure we recover our costs.
Yes, and we're looking at renewing that, those amounts as well for the federal inmates for next year.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight six eight, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight six nine in the matter of approving a contract between the Knox County Board of Commissioners and the Delaware County Board of Commissioners regarding reciprocal inmate housing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, I assume, same thing?
Same thing. We have had a recent inmate from Knox County. I'm not sure if we still, if they're still there, or, but we have had one recently within the last month from Knox County, so we wanted to make sure we did increase that rate and renew the contract with them.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight six nine, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight seven zero in the matter of ranking the proposals submitted for the Delaware County Printers and Printer Maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Avi, Director of Finance. The Fiscal Services Office, with the help of Bob Singer, recently completed the ranking of proposals for printer maintenance services from six vendors. Perry Protech submitted the lowest proposal, and through the analysis, we estimate that the savings annually for the first year of the contract will be about $139,000.
Great, yeah, again, appreciate your efforts on this and Bob's as well. He's done this for several years now, and we've saved a lot of money.
Right.
From this effort, and I want to applaud everyone, Bob in particular, for his leadership and the offices and departments who are cooperating, because we're saving the taxpayers a lot of money.
I think the estimate back on the copy, when we moved forward on that, I think?
Four hundred and some thousand.
Depends on how you keep count.
Sure, sure.
But it could be as high as three quarters of a million, it's just how you keep the count. But it's been impressive savings for the taxpayers, and the print won't be quite as much, but it's still some savings to the, I've heard anywhere forty the first year to about seventy, seventy-five in future years.
Correct, Commissioner. Right now, at least, through the bid proposal that we received, we're estimating about $139,000 just in the first year.
Don't worry, and then this year, or the first?
Just the first year, and then over the life of the three-year, that would be $417,000.
That's a bigger number than I heard, so fantastic.
Good.
And I think there's a couple, three departments maybe aren't participating yet, but I'm sure we'll reach out and give another opportunity.
Right, definitely.
Okay, very good.
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven zero, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Item number thirteen, resolution number two four dash eight seven one in the matter of accepting a roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing the maintenance bond for Maeve Meadows.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Bodnar with the Engineers Office. For your consideration, Maeve Meadows is a 35-lot subdivision located on the east side of Pirate Road, just south of Cheshire Road in Berlin Township. This resolution will accept the new roadways that were constructed, and will approve the traffic speed limits, and establish the stop conditions at the appropriate intersections. This area has all been reviewed and inspected by the appropriate agencies that are required, and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven one, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight seven two in the matter of approving preliminary legislation and an LPA federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the installation of guard rail on Lackey Old State Road, Cali Road 10.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
For your consideration, Commissioners, this agreement allows ODOT to provide us with a grant to cover almost half the cost for the replacement of the guard rail on Lackey Old State. That guard rail's been there for over 50 years, and it equates to a couple thousand feet of guard rail. So the ODOT will pay, like they say, half of that cost, about half of that cost.
Where is that one, Lee? Drive up and down Lackey Old State?
There's several sections of it.
Oh, so it's not one?
No, it's not one long stretch.
Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't remember any long culverts or anything.
No.
Okay.
So much traffic on that road, especially now.
Oh, and in the early mornings, there's a lot of traffic as well.
I can attest to that.
I drive there often on that road, so.
Yeah.
I can as well. So any other questions or comments? Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven two, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight seven three in the matter of approving a professional services agreement with BG Engineering Group LLC for general engineering services 2024-1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Commissioners, for your consideration, this is a standard agreement for BG Engineering Group to provide general engineering services as needed throughout the course of a year. They were selected through a qualification-based selection process that you're aware of, I'm sure, and we would recommend your approval.
What's been our historical usage of this firm?
I don't have that information at my fingertips, but I'll certainly provide that to you.
If you could, please.
Certainly.
Any questions or comments additionally? Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven three, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight seven four in the matter of approving a drainage maintenance petition and a ditch maintenance assessment for Clark Shaw Reserve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, again, for your consideration, Clark Shaw Reserve is a 41.71-acre site located south off of Clark Shaw Road and just west of Sawmill Parkway in Liberty Township. This petition was submitted by 100% of the property owners, and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Vote?
To the Board, vote on motion two four dash eight seven four, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight seven five in the matter of rewarding a bid and approving a contract between Delaware County Commissioners and G&amp;G Enterprises Complete Excavating Services LLC for the Griffith Number 391 Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, again, for your consideration, there were two bids received for this project. Enviro Construction bid $181,350, and then this bid from G&amp;G Enterprises, $179,465.40. This drainage improvement project is located south of Peachbloom Road and west of North Road in Berlin Township, and it's scheduled to begin this fall with a completion scheduled for early spring of next year. We would recommend your approval to move this project along.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven five, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash eight seven six in the matter of approving an owners agreement for public street improvements for Monroe Drive and the district at Brookshire Road Extension Section 2.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, this is a standard owners agreement for improvements to Monroe Drive and the district at Brookshire Road Extension, which is located off of Wilson Road, south of State Route 36 in Brookshire Township. It's by the mall area. We would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, Lee, in item, or number five under the Monroe Drive agreement, it says owners to complete all construction to satisfaction of the county no later than December 1st, 2022?
Well, I'd say that's a?
I'm assuming that's, that's a typo.
We will make sure that's corrected.
Okay. I don't know if it should be '24, because that's pretty quick.
Yeah.
Maybe '25. So, anyway, if we could check into that, Jennifer, or Tracy, or somebody?
I'll make sure to coordinate with both to make sure that?
You guys are good, but you're not good enough to do projects in the past.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be exceptional. That would be exceptional. Mr. Bauserman is pretty darn good, but I don't want to give him that credit.
Good boy.
Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven six, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, with no, did that change?
Yes, we considered that as scriptener's error, and we'll put the correct number there. Item number nineteen. Resolution number two four dash eight seven seven in the matter of accepting a maintenance bond and placing Liberty Trails on their required one-year maintenance period.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Benton, second, but Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, Liberty Trails is a 17-lot subdivision located off of Liberty Road, and it's east of Clark Shaw Road in Liberty Township. This resolution accepts the one-year roadway maintenance bond, and this area's been all inspect, has all been inspected and reviewed by the necessary and required agencies, and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven seven, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Item number 20, resolution number two four dash eight seven eight in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, finally the last item on the agenda from our office. This is to approve six standard utility right-of-way permits with nothing remarkable to share.
Very good. Call for vote?
Vote on motion two four dash eight seven eight, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
That brings us to a Commissioner's Report.
Nothing for me today.
Okay, Commissioner Lewis?
Flags are flying at half-mast today, and just want to, want to say thank you to our former Speaker of the Ohio House, Joanne Davidson. She was a leader of great integrity. She served as Speaker of the House, one of the highest positions in our, in our state She truly, as Speaker, knew how to lead. She knew how to talk to people, she knew, she listened to people, very persuasive, highly, highly respected. And she formed an institute. It was, it was something that she really wanted as part of her great legacy, and that was the Joanne Davidson Leadership Institute. I was very honored to be a founding member of that board. Over 400 women went through that institute and are now in public service, community service positions throughout the state. So just a thank you and recognition to the Speaker.
Yeah, I was in a CCO board meeting when the announcement came across, so she has quite a reputation.
She, she does, so, so, well, well-deserved. And I was on a Zoom call with our Assistant Jail Director, Jesse Jackson, and Cassie Neff, who is in charge of our Stepping Up program with the Council of State Governments. The Council of State Governments has also been involved with Stepping Up, and, you know, we have. And so Cassie was able to, to, to tell the Council all that Delaware County has done for those who have been a part of our Stepping Up program. One of the reasons that our jail has, has fewer inmates is because of the Stepping Up program. So it's, it's great to, to, to make the contact with them. We're gonna have future contacts with them, and they are also working on a Stepping Up program for juvenile justice. And that's, that will, that will really be, it's, it's a great idea, so we'll follow that through. But making, making those contacts with statewide, national organizations is, is extremely important. Was also at a corrections meeting, and again, a lot of good work done by our hard-working community corrections people, so that's it.
Commissioner Benton?
Just a further comment, I guess, on Joanne Davidson. Didn't know her well, but I know she was very well-respected by virtually everyone at the State House, and just a remarkable lady, a real trailblazer for the era where she came up and became a leader.
Right.
That was not common.
Right.
And she, she did a, just did a really nice job. And again, very, very smart, very good leader, and well-respected, so yeah, very, very sad day, you know, to have her pass on. Went to regional planning Thursday night, very well-attended, a lot going on. It was a long meeting, but that seems to be the trend these days, there's just so much going on.
It was a long meeting.
It was a long meeting, and, and again, there, there's so many projects in process, and that's, that's encouraging, because these are, these are good projects. And, you know, some of them get approved, some of them get approved conditions, some of them get denied, so I think it's a real fair process to go through. And Township, Cities, Villages are, are participating, so Engineers, and so on. So I think, again, it's, it's doing what it's, it's supposed to do, and that is planning properly for, for expansion here. Went to the McCammon Creek Ribbon Cutting on Saturday morning. It's a new park and preservation park system. It's in Genoa Township, no, Orange Township, I'm sorry, right near Genoa, but it's in Orange Township, and 54 acres. This is kind of the first of three phases. The second phase is gonna include the Ohio Barn, Heritage Barn, whatever it's called.